Oh, yeah, the judges do those.
Uh, Elisa told me thirty-four, so I'm starting on... No, actually thirty-four.
Thirty-four, thirty-four.
If we talked about thirty-four before, we're gonna talk about it one more time.
Marijuana cigarettes, what? Murray Weed, Dr. Weed. Wasn't that funny that it hurt you all the way over here and now it has marijuana cigarette split? My phone picked up all that.
I think I put my phone on vibrate. I go to a birthday lunch, I go to a birthday lunch which turns into a working meeting over the public transit for Carroll County.
How does that go?
Running to Prissy while I'm there, and I get out, I have two phone calls from Villarica. Um, it went well, it went well, and I spoke to the Lions about how you become a delegate and go into the convention. I spoke to them last time, Prissy wanted my notes, and I go, "Prissy." My notes were like, and they went in the recycle bin. Just tell me what you want to know, and I'll try to repeat it. But we had, law trots are always nice, so... So we took my friend out, ate dessert, now I'm good for a long meeting, I had a great lunch.
Hopefully this is not gonna be that long.
Are public comments, are public comments at the end like they were last time?
You went.
Public comments, are they at the end, last time we met on this, they were at the tail end, is that what is happening this time?
That's what it said last time on the agenda.
I don't have an agenda, okay.
I'm looking at the previous meeting like this.
So are we following the same format?
We reviewed by David Mecklen, uh, city charter review, and then it had public comments, please state your name, blah, blah, blah.
Same format, okay, thank you, I just had somebody who wanted to know.
Madam Mayor, is your mic on? That red light?
Yes. Okay, it is as three oh five on this date that we are opening up the discussion for the reviewing, um, our revision of our charter.
And David Mecklen is the leader.
Let me finish, okay. Uh, Mr. Mecklen, we'll turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mayor, Count, and Council. Elisa told me that we had ended off the last session on number thirty-four of the Murray Weed, analysis and letter, so that's where I started out again today. So, uh, the first point on that is section five point two-one in the current charter, which provides that, uh, that there can be an appointment of somebody to sit on the council, uh, if there is a vacancy within ninety days of the end of the person's term. That to me deserves some, some review in that, I'm not sure that it makes a whole lot of sense, uh, because if you are assuming that you are, that the council is gonna appoint somebody during the final ninety days of a term, that final ninety days would, the clock would really begin to run on September the thirtieth, so that if you have a vacancy that occurs after September the thirtieth, uh, you're already gonna have people that are running for that position, and that will have qualified for that position before September the thirtieth. You know, if it is a, uh, if it is an incumbent that's running for the position, and then they choose to resign after September the thirtieth, so that there's not anybody else running for that position in the November election, then maybe it makes some sense, but, most of the time, you're gonna have somebody who's all, already qualified to run for that seat for, uh, you know, prior to September the thirtieth, so why would you ever wanna appoint somebody for two months or a month and a half when you got people running for election? I mean, practically speaking, it sounds good about the council appointing somebody to fill in the spot, but realistically, it doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
But, don't, don't you think this might be talking about the three people that would not be elected that go around?
Well, you know, it's hard to predict every single possibility that could come up, but, I, I just want y'all to look, think through this and figure out whether or not it really makes any sense to continue this in the charter. Whether, whether, whether or not you wanna have the council appointing somebody to fill in a vacancy on the council.
To my way of thinking, if we appointed somebody, it couldn't come from a group of people running, it would have to be...
Give them a distinct...
Somebody other than, someone running.
Somebody running would, that would be...
They give them an advantage, so we wouldn't do that.
What I'm saying is, if somebody was running, the mayor, Ward One and Ward Two are in the group that runs together. But if that group is running this November, and somebody from three, four, or five, uh, resigns, that means there's at least two years left on their office, or their term.
But this only says that if it's a vacancy within ninety days of the expiration of the term.
Okay, okay.
So it's such a short-term period that it, you know, I'm just not sure that it makes a whole lot of sense. If it was the situation you were talking about, Councilman Best, so that there was two years left in a term, you'd obviously wanna have a special election to fill that. And I just, I'd like for y'all to think through it, 'cause when I was reading through it today, it just, it didn't really make a whole lot of sense to me why we would ever wanna appoint somebody to sit for less than three months. I mean, what practical purpose, we've proven that we can make it longer than three months.
We've proven we can have a lot of tie votes, too.
Right.
Therein lies the one, only, one reason I could think of, well, you'd want to fill that position with someone other than someone that's running.
Right. Yeah, it was just, it's, it's a policy decision, I'm not sure there is an absolute right or wrong answer, but as we're going through this, uh, we get to the final product, that may be something we wanna think about.
It's saying that it's any time within those ninety days.
Right.
So you could be getting really close to the time, it's not necessarily that you're ninety days out, you're within the ninety days, so you're in the middle of a campaign in a good chance of whoever's running for that position.
It's either put off some important business, we might have some important business needs to be decided, or, um, have a tie vote, or I have someone in, put someone in that position just for the few months, three months that are left. I think it needs to be further, you know, out around the ninety, sixty to ninety day period. If you get within the sixty days, you're, you're getting pretty close to the end of it.
And it can't be anybody that's running.
Nope.
'Cause it'd give an unfair advantage.
Number thirty-five, procedure for removal of an officer, section five point three-one of the charter. Uh, that currently sets forth grounds on removing somebody from the position of mayor and council. Mr. Weed's comment was prob, this is probably legal, but do you really wanna do this? I echo his thought. Is, these are the types of provisions that I've seen in charters that people, although you can imagine a situation in which they would be needed, there are also the situations where people, uh, use for political purposes, quite honestly, you know? If I don't like the way that you just voted on a particular matter, how easy is it for me to say that you're an incompetent person and you've committed malfeasance in office, and therefore I move to have you removed from the council? Uh, that's a pretty simple thing to say, and this would trigger, you know, having a hearing on that. I mean, we've been very fortunate that politics in Villarica have not led to those types of battles, but, but they could, and, there is a state law that does provide for virtually the same thing, and I'm not so sure that we'd not be better off simply referencing what the existing state law is, because we can't control that. Uh, we can control how we are going to provide for removal from office, but, but the existing method right now is, is not very clear, and it does subject us to the potential of people using it as a political weapon against each other. And you've gotta remember, you know, just like Mr. Weed pointed out, that, you know, each of you who is an elected official has to remember that this could be used against you. Uh, and although some of the items are pretty specific, such as a conviction of a crime involving moral turpitude, uh, which is traditionally any type of felony, uh, you know, if we have an elected official that gets arrested for a felony crime, then there is a state law provision to take them out of office. I mean, that, that, that type of removal, everybody understands why it's necessary, but, for somebody, for one of you to say that the other person has abandoned their office or neglected to perform the duties thereof, that's a pretty vague standard. And how, how are we gonna determine whether any one of you have, uh, neglected to perform the duties of your office? So, uh, the, in my mind, this particular provision may be better served by simply referencing what the state law is, which is already applicable to us.
If I might, on the previous one we were discussing, why couldn't we add a stipulation in there that it has to be unanimous with the remaining council members that we shall appoint someone? That way, uh, if it's really, the reason comes up when we really need a fifth member, and we all agree we need one, then we could exercise that. I think it ought to be unanimous with the four remaining members, or three if two people quit.
Okay, that, so that's on that point thirty-four that we just talked about?
Yes, the previous one.
Just remember, we're not gonna solve all this now anyway, because we still need the input...
No, I'm just, this is a suggestion that, uh, the rest of us should be unanimous for the agreement. That we need to appoint someone. Everybody should agree to that.
Going back to the one you just did, uh, five point three-one, I think it's, I think that thing needs to come out. It's not for us to decide who sits up here, it's for the people that elect them, and if you ever had, I mean, we may not feel like we serve on a corrupt board, but we got plenty of them around the state, we see them on the news on a regular basis, school boards, so... And you had somebody that even was shedding light on that, other council people might wanna get that person off for those reasons, because they don't like what that person is exposing, and that's not their job to do that. I, I hope we remove that provision.
I mean, it, it's easy to understand the difference between, if, if, if one of, one of you gets arrested for some type of serious crime, that's one thing, if you just disagree on a policy decision, if, if one person thinks the tax rate ought to be set at point A, and some, the two others agree that it ought to be set at point B, uh, does that become, you know, an argument that you've neglected to perform your duties because you don't agree with me? And that's, that's never good for any governing body to be in those type of fights, and I, I'm afraid that this provision opens the door for that. Through good judgment, none of you have stepped through that door, but the door is there. Uh, so I think that, that probably does, uh, bear some serious looking at as to whether or not we should need to significantly change five point three zero. Five point three-one is the, is the procedures that, uh, you go through to remove somebody, and, uh, again, it's pretty cumbersome, it's much more cumbersome than the state law provisions for removing an officer. So I, I would suggest that procedure for removing officers that is currently in our charter needs to be significantly revised. All right, uh, number thirty-six, uh, Mr. Weed questioned why we listed a maximum general operation millage rate of thirteen mils. And I, I don't know that there's any reason for that, other than that was just the decision that, when this charter was written, that somebody drew the line in the sand that we would never go above a millage rate of thirteen mils. There's no state law that requires that, that was just a discretionary decision that was made. I'm not aware that the city of Villarica has ever been anywhere near close to that. Highest I can ever remember the millage rate being was maybe somewhere up around eight.
When I first come home, it was around ten, but, back then, a mil was not anywhere close to what it is now.
And this is thirteen mils for operational purposes, there's another, another section that says that you can levy additional millage for bond purposes. So I, that's something for you to consider, whether or not you wanna change that. Mr. Weed just raised it as a question, not as, not as a problem, but just said, we need to consider whether or not we wanna leave the maximum millage at that or not.
There's no guideline statewide or anything else, I mean, you could, in a city, theoretically, raise the millage as high as you want, till you get voted out.
Yeah, which would happen pretty quickly, but no, I'm not aware that there is any, I know there's a limit on the school boards, a cap of twenty mils for boards of education, but I'm not aware of any constitutional limitation on a city sitting a, a, city setting a millage rate.
So you really don't actually have to have a maximum? I mean, you can if you wanna, but the state doesn't require it?
No, I don't think it requires you to, I think, again, it's just, you know, trying to build public confidence that you're not gonna go, become a, you know, go off the deep end and go rogue on, on the public.
They know where we live.
So that, that is the point, as to whether you wanna leave that as, as is or not.
Is there a purpose for it? I mean, does it serve, they had to put it in because they wanted some sort of safety, like, no matter who's in office, they can't go above this, but...
I think that's probably right.
You know, so...
Where did they get the thirteen?
Should it be a different number?
I mean, where did thirteen come from?
I don't, I don't know.
I'm sure they used whatever, wherever they were, then maybe as some kind of guide as to what they thought would be out of control or something. Okay, question mark.
All right, number thirty-seven, uh, section six point eleven, he raised the question of the last sentence of that, which says that the city of Villarica is hereby exempted from the provisions of Georgia Code Sections ninety-two dash four, one oh one, through ninety-two dash four, one oh four, and, uh, like Mr. Weed, I don't, those aren't really Georgia Code Sections, so, uh, it, it must have been transposed at some time over the years, because there are no Code Sections, nor were there ever any Code Sections to that extent. But, but these don't match up with any of that, so, um, you know, unless, unless, you know, we can somehow figure out what that was intended to reference, indeed, that last sentence does need to come out. Uh, number thirty-eight, uh, page on section six point one-two, uh, he questioned the section which allowed for the voluntary payment of taxes prior to the time when due. And, you know, my own personal opinion is to leave that in, because I've seen that come into play on occasion where, um, the city would be in need of money for some reason, and you're faced with having to go and get a tax anticipation note near the end of the year in order to, you know, cover expenses through the end of the year, and where it allows the city manager to go to one of the larger taxpayers in the city, you know, one of the industrial taxpayers, and say, you know, "We really need some money, do you mind paying your taxes here in August, as opposed to waiting until December to pay?" And, and that, and that's what the purpose of that is, to allow people to make voluntary payment of their taxes prior to the time when it's due. And I, again, Mr. Weed raised a question as to whether or not it somehow violates the anti-gratuity clause, he didn't say that it did. I don't think it does, and...
Does that play in, I didn't quite get...
My example.
No, how, how it would seem like gratuity?
You know, I'm not sure.
I'm gonna take a guess.
I'm not sure how he thought that either.
Like somebody's giving us an F to it, actually.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a guess, just a stab in the dark, 'cause I wouldn't know what he's thinking either, but, um, if you're paying your taxes as a large taxpayer in advance, you probably wanna get something back, and if you're getting something back that someone else isn't getting, um, it's either an equal protection issue, or it's a gratuity issue. Is, um, I love folks, I believe they're all generous, but they're usually not that generous.
Yeah, and that, that, if that's what he's, if that's the point that he's making, that is a good point, I don't think you could say, "Well, we'll, we'll give you a ten percent discount if you'll pay uh, early." That, that would be a problem, but to simply say, "We really need the money, it would help us out if you'll pay early," I don't see a problem with that. If, if, if I, as an individual taxpayer, before I get my tax bill, which still hasn't come out yet, but, uh, you know, if I came in in June and said, "I, I wanna go ahead and prepay," you know, "something on what, what I expect my tax bill is going to be," is there anything really wrong with that?
It's so loud now.
I did that in DeKalb County, they sent my check back, they did a refund. Seriously, they, they sent us a refund back, it was like, um, I was just paying the taxes in advance, just...
It, you know, it behooves the council to keep a surplus, and we have that in case we ever need it, so...
So I, I don't know that there's anything that needs to be changed in, in this particular section, six point one-two. His next point, point number thirty-nine, a typo in six point one-three. On the version I have, that typo was already fixed, so I, it should be imposed rather than imposes. Number forty, uh, section six point one-four, check on the occupation tax standard. I, I have looked at that, and I, I do, I mean, his comment was that it's probably fine, and I have read through it and compared it to the state law, and I think that it is fine. I don't see any, any changes that need to be made, he suggested we check it, and I did. Uh, number forty-one, uh, is a very good point, section six point three-four, which, um, it says that, "As the next order of business following the adoption of the budget, the council shall levy by ordinance an annual tax on all real and personal property within the city of Villarica." Uh, and, and I think we just need to take out that first phrase, "As the next order of business following the adoption of the budget." I don't know that that needs to be a charter requirement, that it is the absolute next item of business. It, it can be two items down, it could be in the next meeting, and that's just the pleasure of the city manager and the city council as to where it shows up, it doesn't need to be a charter requirement.
Strike the first part of the sentence.
Yes, and I think that the sentence should just become, "The council shall by levy, shall levy by ordinance an annual tax." All right, number forty-two, it's just section six point four-one. Their number, subsection B of that says that the council may sell and convey any real or personal property owned or held by the city of Villarica for governmental or other purposes at a public or private sale with or without advertisement. Uh, that particular section probably is in violation of state law, and I'm gonna propose that we change that to just say that we may sell or convey any real or personal property in any manner permitted by state law. Ordinarily, if you decided that you wanted to just sell City Hall, that you could not, um, you could not sell that without somehow making it publicly, you know, making some public notice that you were gonna sell it.
So do you just take out the "without"?
Yeah, yeah, it's with or without, yeah, probably if you took out "or" without advertisement, that would satisfy this, but it's still a much simpler fix to just say that we can sell any real or personal property in accordance with state law.
And state law would require notification, so that takes care of it.
It does. All right, number forty-three, uh, section seven point one-three, uh, which says that the city can lay pipe in the right-of-ways without charge, and he makes the point that, sure, we can do that within the city, because for the most part, we control our own right-of-ways. Uh, if we wanted to lay pipe for water lines out into the county, out into Carroll County, or out into Douglas County, we don't have any right to give ourselves the power to lay it without charge when we're using somebody else's right-of-ways, and that, that's an obvious point that does need to be fixed.
We have an issue then. We do have water pipe laid outside the city of Villarica?
We, we...
My point would be, if we replace that pipe?
If we, if we have it in the ground right now, we have an established easement for it, but if we were going to expand the lines, if we wanted to run it farther, another mile down the road on a county road, we're gonna have to ask the county for permission to do that. Hopefully they cooperate with us, but who knows? Number forty-five, check on the list of subjects for franchises in section seven point two-one. I believe that is correct also, I think we've got all of the franchises, uh, we do need to, to double-check that against the state law, but I, I looked over very carefully, and quickly, very quickly, and I think we've got everything covered that we might have franchises.
Then you skipped forty-four.
Yes, I did, I'm sorry, forty-four, which is section seven point two-o. Uh, it's power to regulate, uh, occupation taxes, and we're okay on that, I think it's okay as is.
Yeah, forty-five.
Forty-five, I think that's okay also, I, one thing I wanted to double-check, I'll look real quickly, is to see whether or not is, there's anything in the, um, there's nothing that specifically mentions fiber optic cables, and we may want to add that in. You know, it conceivably included in the erection of poles, stringing of wires, laying of pipes, lines or conduits both above and below the ground surface, but, uh, fiber optic cable is not something that even existed when this charter was written, so we probably would make sense to add that in, and there may be other technologies that, you know, I'm not, I'm just not thinking of, that we may wanna consider that, uh, technology companies that wanna run lines are, uh...
It's like a wire, it's just a hollow wire, glass wire. You don't think stringing of wires would cover that?
Well, probably, I mean, I, I don't think anybody would question us, but, you know... Well, probably. I mean, I don't think anybody would question us, but, you know, it doesn't hurt to make it perfectly clear. All right, on number 46, he makes, and that is section 9.10, and this clearly has to be replaced, because this charter provides that the mayor and council shall appoint a zoning and planning board, which would essentially conduct the zoning functions of the city, and that has been prohibited by state law for some time now. Only the council can make a zoning decision under state law. So, section 9.10 has to just essentially be taken out.
So, it's the whole thing, not just the fact of the authority that it gave them? Like, I thought the planning, if I'm understanding this correctly, the zoning and planning board is okay. What's not okay is that they shall have the authority to establish zoning rules and regulations on a zoning map.
That's true, Leslie. It's, the last sentence is the illegal part of it. I'm not sure that we even need the first sentence, because that is included in our Uniform Development Code anyway, so I don't know why. There's no real reason for it to be a charter provision.
Okay.
I mean, it's sort of like the Constitution. If you want to constitutionally adopt a planning and zoning board, we can, but there's no real reason that you wouldn't want to just have it in the UDC, creating it there, so that it's created by ordinance as opposed to being created by charter.
Okay.
And that's also true, although Mr. Weed didn't mention it. That's also true of section 9.11, which is the zoning board of appeals, which for many, many years was a nonexistent organization. We have reconstituted it, but the question is, does it need to be a charter-established board? If we need one at all, should it not just be created in the UDC?
Plus, with it being in the charter written the way it is, would we have not been in violation of the charter when it didn't exist?
Probably. Well, one reason why it never really came to play is because we really never had any cases. I'm not sure we violated it only unintentionally, because we didn't have any appeals variances for, gosh, years and years and years. We may have had at some point in time, but...
So, we're doing away with Article 9, huh?
Yeah, that would be my... Part of it we have to get rid of. My recommendation is going to be that we do away with all of it, because it's already covered in another ordinance, and I just don't know that it rises to the level of needing to be in the charter. We do have the power of the council to create zoning in the city of Villarica. That's one of the council powers further on up in this document. And you've done that by the creation of the Uniform Development Code, so I don't know why there's any need to have specific creation of boards for zoning in the charter. The next number is... Number 47, penalties, which has a section that says that we can punish penalties up to $5,000, which is really in excess of what state law gives us the power to do. It's a $1,000 limitation. And I think the way that probably that $5,000 got written in is that our municipal court is given the power on a third offense DUI charge to fine up to $5,000. By state law, we're given that power, but that's an exception, really, on most other fines. For any type of city ordinance violation, $1,000 is the maximum that we can charge. So, that needs to be changed from $5,000 to $1,000.
Did you notice 10.13, that the use of masculine nouns in the charter is for uniformity only and in no way to be interpreted as discriminating against the female gender? They felt necessary to put that in?
Yeah. We may want to consider whether or not that's still appropriate in there. Leave that to the province of the council.
We might get offended.
It's the difference between a charter that's 25 years old and today. So, that's with the last presentation and this one, that's all of the points that Mr. Weed raised, and I've also thrown in my own two cents' worth on items that need to be reviewed and looked over. I think that probably the next step will be for the council to solicit input. I think it's probably going to be appropriate for you to wait and get the mayor and council person that will be coming on board, and to go through this again with the thought of coming up with a redraft of it, you know, incorporating many of these points that we've talked about, putting it out for the public to look at again in a redrafted form, so that people can weigh in on parts that they agree with and don't agree with, and then it'll be up to the mayor and council to make a recommendation to our legislative delegation to adopt it or not.
I just had two things that I wanted to make sure I covered. One of them was related to that. I've been hearing from more and more constituents that are concerned about too much more being done on this with us still missing the mayor and other council member. And my comment was to them, because I figured this is what's going to happen anyway. We're heading right into budget time, and that most likely this would almost have to go to the back burner, because of the fact that we're going to have to be having these additional meetings getting through the budget. But nonetheless, that concern needed to be expressed. And the only other thing I wanted to check on is when we're talking about hiring and firing, and we needed, on one of the ones we addressed previously, there was talk about, it was not clear. Murray Weed had said it's not clear as to who those officers and department heads are, and that we have to clear that up, who that entails on power of hiring and firing. And I see that in the charter, city manager has the authority to hire the attorney. I was told that in the past one time, I wasn't here, that the mayor fired the attorney. The mayor fired the attorney. I don't know what the charter said back then. I'm assuming it was somewhat similar. Maybe it was just violated. I just want to make sure that there has to be a consensus that, this is, sorry, you're here, so we just have to talk about you while you're here, that no one person could get rid of you, whether it be whoever the city manager is at that time, no matter who the mayor is at that time. And we all know, as council people, we can't do anything by ourself, but that there'd have to be a consensus for us to get rid of the city attorney, so they can feel like they can lay out what they need to say to us, no matter what it is, their best professional advice, without feeling like one person holds their fate.
Can I assume that in 3-32, where it says city attorney, that the city manager may appoint subject to the approval of city council, a city attorney? Does it also mean he may fire a city attorney with approval of city council?
Yeah, I think that, yes. I think that's...
But it doesn't say it. It's inferred. Is that what we're saying?
No, it says it, "Subject to the approval of the city council."
Okay.
Look at 3.32.
3.32?
Yeah, 3.32.
Okay.
It's very clear.
It said appoint, but it didn't say anything about fire.
It says a point. It doesn't say anything about fire. Again, I will reiterate, inferred, or is it, does it have to be written, or is it clear that that's the way that would work?
You can appoint another one on top of the one we got.
That's true. Now, council would have to approve the hiring of another one.
And the firing of the first.
Yeah, you'd have to, the whole process.
But it doesn't say that, so me not being an attorney and just reading it, is that automatic, or does it have to be clarified?
3.22 also, you know, essentially relates to that, because it says, "As chief administrative officer, the manager shall have the power to appoint all city officers and department directors with the approval of the council. He shall also have such other powers and duties as are vested in him by this charter and by ordinance." So, you know, I understand the point that you're making. It could be cleared up some. I'm really not sure the, I'm trying to remember what Percy might have thought about a mayor ever firing somebody. I'm trying to figure out who that would have been in my mind.
I can't remember one.
And she named a person and everything, but it didn't stick in my head.
Possibly was Mayor Lee firing my partner, Tommy Vance. That's the only one I can think of that it might have been.
Was it the same charter?
No, that would have been back in 1988, so it might have been the same charter.
I heard the other way is you just write them out of the budget, and then you're...
So, you know, we can look at that if you think that's appropriate.
I just want it clear.
You could put may appoint. You can put may remove or appoint with the approval of the city council.
Because, see, it doesn't matter who's in office now, or in...
It matters to me.
I mean, when we look at the charter and we go, "Oh, well, we don't need to do that, because we wouldn't do that." No, that's not how, we have to think about down the road for all cities.
Why don't we just add that few words, "It may remove or appoint." That covers firing and hiring. Sounds simple enough.
I'll take a look at that when we do a redraft.
You want to do it on 3.22, and 3.32?
Y'all tell me what your pleasure is. I mean, it's the same philosophical theory.
Well, the reason I asked a while ago is that can we assume that and take one out and be...
There are certain things the council definitely wants to be involved with, because we're overseeing the city through the city manager, but we need to be heavily involved in certain aspects of it.
Well, that, your position is a little different from a regular employee.
I don't disagree with that. I mean, the, my theory has been always that I represent the city. I don't represent any one individual. I report to David, to the city manager, but I also report to y'all.
And you advise us.
That's right.
Legally and everything. We take information from you that we're working with.
Yes. The attorney's ethical obligation is to the city, not to any individual.
Right.
My client is the city, and although that's sometimes difficult, because the city has different, you know, parts to it. Y'all are each individuals, but I don't represent any of you individually. I represent the city.
You're trying to keep us out of trouble sometimes.
It does need to be, you know, it does, the charter needs to reflect that the legal council is a representative of the city, not any one individual.
Aren't you going to write up all these additions and subtractions?
I'm going to do the best I can and then put a document out there that everybody in the whole world can try and tear apart.
And then I think our next meeting should be in January, after we have the two people on board to review, do a final review.
Probably from just a timing standpoint, you know, keep the timing in mind, is that the legislature will convene sometime soon after, you know, second week of January or so, and they will probably go through early April, probably. But there'll be a point in time, and, you know, I don't know when it is, but usually maybe figure the first of March, by which time, you know, a bill like this is going to have to have gotten into the hopper and be in process if it is going to get passed next year. Otherwise, it'll be a year afterwards. So, I think it's fine to meet on it in early January, but we're going to have to time it out so that we can move pretty quickly.
We could meet on it in January, bring the other two up to speed and get their input, and then vote on it in February.
Probably that's still enough time.
Well, and as far as up to speed, too, is hopefully anybody that's running for office that, you know, well, some of y'all are here, are watching, listening, looking, reading, and also figuring out what they have concerns about, and if we haven't addressed it, you know. Anyway, I think these type of bills get priority in the legislative session when things need to get done at home. It's usually not real controversial, as long as they just want to know that we're all together on it, that we're all good on it, and then they'll, gosh, yeah, I was about to say Dusty, Jay and Mike and...
Jay and Mike and the gentleman from Douglas County.
Micah?
Mike Dugan.
No, not Mike Dugan.
Gravely?
Michael Gravely.
Michael Gravely, yeah.
Micah, yeah.
Those would be the three people that would have to sign off on it. If they give it their blessing, then it will pass.
Gosh, this was too short. Can we make this longer?
Wait a minute.
We still got public comments, and all these people are going to talk.
Do we have to have, we have to have one more meeting?
We're going to have to have to bring the other, you know, to get the input from those other people, those two people that are missing.
No, I'm saying that we have to have one more meeting and then vote on it. Would it be better to have more than one more?
What's the... You know, I don't know. I mean, I think once we come up with a draft of it and float it out there for people to look at, you'll get some sense as to whether there's a lot of discussion about that people want a voice or not. This is the last thing we want to do in secret.
Yeah, here's one of my overall concerns. I would encourage the council to continue working through the document, so that come January, you have a really decent draft document, and then you have subsequent meeting in January to basically bring any other consensus points up. The reason behind that is, is if the council wants to move forward with local legislation, we're going to have to start the advertisement process in January that were required by a law to do. You're going to want that 30-day process for public review of a document. Otherwise, you're, you know, going to set yourself back, and the magical day that David mentions, I'm assuming he's referring to crossover day, is a moving target. You will not know when that is until you're well into the session. So, if you basically put the whole document on the back burner and then think that in January you can pick it up and just do it in a couple of meetings, you're going to be behind the eight ball. So, you really, at that point, need to say, "Well, we're going to look to do this in 2018," which is fine. You just really have to set those expectations out.
But we don't have any more to work through at this point until a draft is made of what we've just done, right?
Yeah, I think the city attorney ought to go ahead and...
Create the draft.
Create the draft, and then basically start, should have another couple of meetings, if you will, to go through those red line documents. Because in January, you really want as much of a consensus document as you can get. You're not going to accomplish, I think in January and February, what you think you can accomplish, given the amount of changes that are being proposed there. You'd much rather, you know, get it moving forwards to a point where you have a good, solid, working document, and then be prepared in that January timeframe to make any tweaks, changes, et cetera, with the full council on board. Because you want to feel comfortable, or certainly no elected official on the State House side ought to feel comfortable until you have a 5-0 unanimous vote and resolution from your council to even move local legislation forward.
But then that would say we're going to work through all those red line things while we're still missing the mayor and council person. I can't see us excluding them from what we would call final, in a sense, finalizing the document. That's the problem. I'd love to get more, I'd love to have more special meetings. I just love special meetings.
I think...
The more the merrier, but I don't see how...
Well, I think we need to give him at least the month of September or whatever to create the draft, and then it needs to be put online to get public input fed back to us. So, our meeting, if we're going to have another one, needs to be... So our meeting, if we're going to have another one, needs to be pretty far down in the year.
Yeah, and I think that's very doable. What I see this turning out to be is going through the draft of the 50, 46, 47 points that Mr. Weed added in and another 10 or so that I threw in there. Probably 45 of those are going to be changes that just need to be made that are obvious. I'm guessing that there's probably going to be in the vicinity of five to 10 items that will be items that will really attract people's attention and you'll want to debate it and discuss it. Because they are going to be discretionary decisions, that there's not a right or wrong answer. It's just whatever the majority decides is the answer. And I don't think that's going to be a huge number of issues. There's only a handful of really key, crucial decisions that help shape and mold the balance of power within the city. And those will be the ones that, you know, people will want to debate. I suspect the candidates will be debating those, some in the context of the election, or at least having discussions about it. So shouldn't, by the end of September, we'll have a draft that everybody can look at and they'll know what those issues are that bear discussion and debate.
And that will go on our website so the public can get a look at what we're doing. And then we'll get feedback from one or two people. Looking at all this audience out here, it'll be from them.
I don't know, would you be here? But, you know what? Now that everything's online and, you know, there's the video, people know. They can go and just watch one segment if they have a concern about a certain thing, so...
There are still people out there that don't believe in Internet, so...
Oh, yeah, that's why I said you really want to have that 30-day advertisement review process. It really, you know, the charter's a very serious document, so...
It's the Constitution.
So you want to get that draft out there so the public actually has a viable draft to provide you all comments on.
So I don't know where that balance is drawn as far as we want to have something, we want to move towards something that's permanent, but we don't...
It's not permanent.
No, a draft. I think he finishes the draft in the month of September. It's available to put online and let the public see it through October. If we want to put some more input, we'd have to do it sometime in December and then do the final thing in January after we get people on board.
You'll actually have people on board November 9th, if you want to.
Unless there's a runoff, then it'll be the beginning of December.
Yeah, you could easily go, what for, going into runoff?
But by the beginning of December, everybody should be in place.
Yeah.
No matter what, right?
So we could vote on it in January.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be very surprised if, you know, candidates running for public office aren't commenting or providing public comment into the process. I mean, you would expect them to. So, but like I said, I think the most important is, you know, the reference to, you know, vacant positions on council. It's really the public as a whole that really needs to be able to get their hands around of a document, understand what the proposed changes are, see those red lines, and be able to give comment as a whole to the council as to the draft document at that time. And I think once that 30-day period occurs, then you can again go and meet in January, for instance, and sit down in a group and digest that public comment and decide what you want to do. And then if there's a consensus on the council, you know, then you can look at that 5-0 resolution. Because again, it's generally local legislation, most are not apt to move anything forward if they think there's dissension on your governing body.
They actually had a, it wasn't a written rule, but a declared rule of the Carroll County delegation that if it was not a unanimous approval by the governing body that was asking for the legislation, they wouldn't introduce it at all.
And there's good reason for it.
This has got to be something that's not decided on a three to two vote.
That's why we need the total governing body before we take a vote.
Yeah, but we also can, if we take what Mr. Mecklen is going to produce and sit down and talk through it and we can agree on all of them, which may not ever happen, if we could agree on all of them, then we only have to worry about two people to agree rather than six.
Right.
So the more we're able to communicate back and forth with each other to understand why people don't want this or want that, and including the public comments, we will be much ahead of the game somewhere between Thanksgiving and Christmas. And then allow those folks to come in after, if you want to call it, actually they are sworn in or whatever. But, you know, I agree with Mr. Mecklen, you know, at November 8th, we will be able to sit down and talk to these folks and get an understanding of which way they want to go. And then wait and have the public comments come in and see if, it needs to be swayed one way or the other. But for us just to sit back and wait and listen to the public talk, which is what we need to do, but I also think that we need to make sure that we're all on the same page of understanding what we need to do and why. There are just too many things that are in here. And as Mr. Mecklen said, of the 47 things here, probably 40 of them are cut and dry. Those seven things could stop us from changing the charter because of just what he said as well. The people that are going to change it in the state capital won't do it unless it's 5-0 vote.
Well, we give him to the end of September to do the draft and he'll send us a copy. And then we can review it and go from there. Some letters got to be put out for the public.
The quicker the better.
Yeah.
Don't spend the night, you know, 12 o'clock at night trying to figure out what to say. I'm not saying that.
I'm so grateful that you gave it to them at the end of September.
Most people would say, can you have it by noon tomorrow? Being realistic here. You've got some other work to do, so I'm being realistic.
You know, like you used to do those term papers, then you stay up all night and type them.
If that's all our comments, then do we have any public comments from?
Well, I guess you all know me, John Hennaback. I agree with what you're discussing. It's critical to get this draft out for the public to see because there have been comments that have been made at public meetings that are not reflected in these comments, that Mr. Weed, is that?
Weed.
And I think we need to see that draft to see what of the things that we have talked about previously are in that draft that we're not discussing here. For instance, at the last meeting, I suggested we have a section that considered term limits. Well, that's not part of what he's talking about. But I would like to see what comes up in a draft of the things that have been talked about. So I think it's critical. All of September? I don't know, that's up to date. But the quicker you can get that out and get it back into the hands so that the public can see it. For instance, even on today, on the section that you discussed on the 90-day limit. You know, that, I guess it's the state law more than the 90-day limit that has really caused problems for Ward Four because we missed the state's mandate for when a special election could be held. Well, maybe we could adjust that in our charter for certain provisions that would allow for that. You know, I would not want to see the council appoint a Ward Four representative to fill Mike Williamson's position. Because that would be, that would be very difficult. But if we could maybe have some special arrangement for a special election. I don't know, because of the state law does mandate those lines.
We just can't change that, that's the...
But the state could.
You, no. I mean, the state could not, they could not change our charter to be in violation of the general state law. They could change general state law for the whole state, but I don't think they will because we asked them to.
We are VR.
But we could, I mean, we could have a provision in our charter that would give us the ability to have the council to appoint somebody to have filled in for Mike Williamson. And that's that type of policy decision that somebody has to make is, do you want the remaining council people to appoint somebody to fill Ward Four? And that's a legitimate debate, you know. It's, it could be a good thing because you literally get somebody seated in there, but by the same token, you're having people fill that position that may or may not care about Ward Four.
And we're not elected by those constituents. Again, I think the key is to get that draft as complete, including what you've heard, public comments made, and get that out to review. That's absolutely critical. This is by far and away the most difficult and challenging activity for the council. Now, to Leslie's point, though, you had talked about, you know, the need to get these representatives on board early so they could discuss the council. But the other problem is we're not represented when it comes to the budget talk.
We have a... We don't have much, here's the problem with that, and we know it. And we'd love to have a representative, but I'm a citywide representative, so I'm really representing Ward Four, too, so...
Well, yes and no.
Yes and no.
But that is where we're disadvantaged in a respect, so, yeah.
I would call the governor's office every week and ask him why he put us in this situation.
He said, if you let me, I'd appoint somebody.
I think they need to continue to get heat, even though he won't be the governor forever. They need to know, boy, those people really got upset when we did that. Didn't have to be this way.
I think the two critical things are this charter review and the comprehensive plan, the longer-range comprehensive plan. Those are the two critical items that the city has to be concerned with, so... Well, thank you very much, but the quicker we can get that out, the better.
Understood.
Here, any more public comments? If not, I declare this meeting adjourned. All in favor? Thank you all for coming to be a part of this. We need all of you all to. We can't do it by ourselves.
You're gentle with that gavel. Jay, smack that.